All right, good evening. This is a call to order the ad hoc Board of Education Ad Hoc Budget Procedure Committee meeting. At six forty seven. October tenth, twenty twenty four. Mike Whitney, Jen White, and Ian Thomas in attendance, or I should say. Are here as committee members, and we have Adrian Johnson and Bev Washington in attendance. Not as participants, as attendees, just watching the meeting. And. I believe, just a quick bit of communications before we jump into the agenda. I was in contact with the chair. He did express an interest in dropping in for the meeting. And he may exercise the ex officio status to become part of the committee, or at least like participate in the conversation, non voting. I'm not sure what his intent is, but he just said he's gonna be possibly dropping in if he was able to get free from his other obligations. Which of course, he's more than welcome to do. So, first up on the agenda is a review of the meeting minutes from September nineteenth. I'll entertain a motion to. Pass the minutes.
I moved to pass the minutes.
All right, moved by Whitney, and do we have a second? Well, I'll second it then, just to get it on the floor. Any comments? All right. I just wanna check real quick. Jen, can you hear us? And is your technology working correctly?
Oh, there you go. Sorry, it's user error. I had to press a button to speak. But yes, if you get one a second, I can second that.
Okay, now we're fine. We're on the floor now. So any comments in the minutes?
No.
All right, very well then. Take a vote to approve the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I'm in favor as well. So there's none opposed and no abstaining. The minutes are accepted. All right, so. Now that brings us to. Number two, or number three, I should say, the. We are gonna look at the report here. I'm just gonna get it pulled up. There we go. All right, can everyone see the report?
Yes, and I've got it up too, on my computer.
Very good. All right, so. So I just kinda, my thought was we could just go page by page through the document and just kinda, you know, as we go page by page, just. I guess vote each page into existence as a recommendation to move forward to the policy committee as needed, or to the. General body, depending on that. Basically, I envisioned it. I'm gonna skip to the table of contents here real quick. So we have the introduction narrative. That's not a thing that has to be voted on necessarily. So we can just approve it as being part of the report. And then the budget book table of contents template. Would be a thing that. I would envision that could be voted on to present to the whole. Body of the Board of Education. To accept as. A thing they'd wanna see for this year. And also, it could be a thing that could be added into one of the policy revisions. That would be proposed as part of this report. And same with number three and four, in the idea that the budget process timeline. One is from the Board of Ed point of view, and the other is from the admin point of view. Both of those could stand alone as a thing that we want to adopt for this year, with the dates that are specific to this year in them. And then also could be attached as a template. To the policy revisions that are in chapter five. Chapter five is the big monster. There's interviewing our notes from previous meetings. And comparing them with the current budget policy. One approach, the approach I chose to take. Was that I would go through the policies that we had and see if there is overlap between what we identified as areas we'd want to improve, or make some changes to. And to see if I found policy that that could be. Parallel to that, or that already kinda covered that territory, thereby like not having to create policy out of whole cloth. But being able just to revise the policy that's already on the books with maybe a couple sentences, or a paragraph or two. In some cases, it was a bit more substantial. But we'll see that when we get to it. And I think, you know, that as we go through it, it'll kinda speak for itself at that point. And then chapter six is just a draft of the ongoing budget software research analysis. That's not, that would just be approved as to be part of. Or that could be approved to just be part of the report as an update. It is not in a state of completion at all. And so that's, that's something that we would have to like come back and complete at some point in the, in the future. So with that general overview, any, any questions on that? Okay, hearing none. We'll just. Jump into the introduction and narrative. So. What's the will of the body? Do we wanna read word by word, or read amongst ourselves? I don't wanna beliger anyone with the sound of my voice droning onwards, but so I'd be glad to share the reading duties if somebody else wants to read.
So my, my overall question here is. Are we trying to shorten this up? That would be my, my inclination. But, but it, I mean, we don't need to, but that's, so, so if we do, I've got comments in, in that spirit.
I am open. I believe brevity definitely is, is the, is always appreciated. This definitely was not meant to be the final draft. It was a thing I kinda threw together, try to, again, with the kitchen sink approach. So. Yeah, if you see things that you wanna, you know, you think you tighten this up, I definitely appreciate fresh eyes. Haven't been immersed in this for much of the past couple weeks. Yeah, so cut away.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, it, it reads quite well, and so the things that I'll suggest cutting for brevity could also be left in. It's not like I'm. Opposed to the wording or content at all. And, and just as an example, like I, I really like the, the first sentence, right? Says exactly why we're here. And then the, the second paragraph over the past many months. It's, it's informational, but we could get rid of that if we needed to. Or wanted to. I, I really thought the interim, the next one about like why this is the interim report, I thought that is actually quite, quite important to keep. Brevity or not, like that's, that, that helps explain where this is going. And. And. And I, and that's all like that's, so I guess I, I've, the first paragraph, I'd keep the second one, we could remove the third one, definitely keep in some form. And then the fourth one. What, like, we could just, I think we've almost got that already in the one before. Basically, it's like, hey, we didn't. The business, the business manager wasn't hired yet, the new one. And I feel like. That's almost in the paragraph above. So that, that's my.
I was on the fifth paragraph. All right, yes, so this one?
Yeah, I mean, it's almost in the, the one above it.
Right, there is mentioned there, yes, and that, that's, that again, brevity is, is definitely always appreciated in these sorts of situations. So. I could agree, like, these two paragraphs could go.
Yeah, and it's, yeah.
I'm okay with taking both of those out.
Okay.
And, and the, the next one is, is sort of like what comes next, right?
Right.
And then I, the, I'm torn on the, the next parts, like, we've got the chapters, they've got titles. And we're explaining what's going on in those chapters. So I, I feel like, I, I've been torn on this because I would write the sort of thing myself. But we might not need those, the chapter descriptions, right? Like. Cause the next thing, cause we've got the table of contents.
Right.
So that one, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it could be shortened up, it could be removed. That's, that's a little. It, it's, it's long as it is. And we might be able to do without it, and then move the text in later, but that's, I mean, I don't wanna spend too much, it's not like it bothers me, so I don't want to spend too much time on that part, but. Just thoughts.
All right, well, I'll highlight it as under, Jen, thoughts?
I'm okay with keeping it because I know the people that we're gonna be presenting to, so I think they would actually appreciate it.
Okay.
So it's almost an executive summary feel to it at that point?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that was my intent with writing it, was kinda just to give it, give a bit of a primer of like, you know, the way, the intent behind the way things are laid out. I, I would, if I had to vote either way, I would, I would be inclined to keep it, just because it kinda helps like really. Build a slow inclined ramp up into the, the bulk of the report. I think it just kinda, yeah, sets a good stage.
And, and then my, my tweak on the chapter order. Do we want the budget timeline one to come next? Instead of the, the budget book, because there'd be more pushback on that one, just from.
Gotcha, gotcha, understood, yeah. Take, take, take the easy ones off the table first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Speaking, yeah. I am completely open to that. So.
Yes. Good point, because then we could get derailed fast.
Yeah. While I'm up here switching this around. I also had the thought of maybe timeline and template, or like have something like that where it's. The timeline now, but also a template for the future. Sort of serving a dual purpose. Is that a sensible thing to do?
Yeah, I think so. I, I mean, we could almost just straight, I, I like how it's, it's phrased with specific dates for this year, but. It could be like, you know, like we are kinda doing it right, right before. Winter break, or, or things like that. A third week of. You know, the end of December, the third week of January, stuff like that. And I do wanna say, like, that's what we're going through, and I'll be suggesting edits, and you can feel free to take them or not take them, but, but thank you very, very much for. Putting what we've covered through the meetings into a very well organized and coherent document.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. It felt like a worthy challenge.
And now we can rip it apart. But it is very good.
And once it gets implemented, there you go, we have process. Guidelines.
All right. So that, so I'm just gonna kinda highlight these as an area I have to go back and polish up a little bit. Cause I don't wanna get bogged down in time of actual time to edit.
And, and also, this is an interim report anyway, and so if there's like subsequent wordsmithing that you find you need to do. I don't, I don't, I mean, I'd be fine. I don't think we have to necessarily vote on exact versions, just.
Right, just general intent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
General content.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. All right, so we can move on.
Cause this is faithful to what we've discussed and talked about, for, as it is.
Yes. So actually, this is gonna be. All right, so, do we wanna jump to the timelines then and try to follow the new order of chapters, or just kinda go as we got it?
Just go as we have it. This way, we're not bouncing. At least that's my opinion.
I'm good with it. Mike, you good with it?
Yes, of course.
All right. All right, so on the big binder table of contents. Now. There, there was the hope that the superintendent and the business managers, as such as they are, that we, I think we are still carrying two for the time. Bean is in transition now, but either way, they weren't able to make it tonight due to a schedule conflict. So I'm open to suggestion on. How to deal with like the highlighted sections where we noted that we might need some input from them. Is that just a thing we wanna carry in there, that note, or take it out and, and just kinda let things be what they're gonna be?
Do we have enough time between now and when we present to have like another meeting with Jess Irene, to walk her through this?
The short answer, as I understand it, is no, because my thought was like, if we vote this out of, you know, vote this towards the body tonight. As a package, then it would show up at the COW on the fifteenth. And I've already got a, an agenda item reserved in policy committee for the sixteenth, for the policy revisions that are part of this report. So if this report should make it out, and all those proposed draft revisions are good by this committee, then they'll see their day in.
Yeah, so basically the same time as the rest of the board.
Right, right, and then, and then the first official read of the report and those policy revisions. As two related but separate agenda items, I imagine, would be the twenty eighth of October, our next regular meeting.
The only reason I was asking was because I was trying to see if we could get her buy-in before, we don't need her buy-in. But it would just be nice because, you know, she's the new finance or business manager. And she's prob, she's gonna be the one working with this, so if she had any, like.
Right.
Suggestions, and so that, like, as we present it, we could just be like, we're not presenting to her at the first time, and she's already part of. Like our process.
Right, and if, to my understanding, like, this report does not become fully official until like, you know, the, the whole board approves of the report, so. And that can't happen until it's at a regular meeting. That's my understanding of the process. And, and. So we do have time, cause like the, the COW would just be a presentation of the current draft. It wouldn't be necessarily voting action.
No, I was just trying to simplify our lives, right? Because if she's totally against one item, or let's say, we can, we as a small group can make that. So that it doesn't become like a discussion item, and then ten or six other cooks in the pot, you know what I mean? Like, we address it as a small group, and then when we make that first reading, like, it's almost like she's on board and. Or whatever. It's just more like strategic, how we could get it in there, but if she doesn't have time. I mean, it's okay. I mean, the document. Is like solid, like all the ideas we came up with, like, I'm pretty confident and willing to defend it, you know, so. But it's just like, I just didn't want any detractions, you know what I mean? Sort of like getting it in order before we even get there.
Well, I think there, there would be that, that one, the week of the twenty first, where there's a bit of time between. You know, the COW on, on the fifteenth and the regular meeting on the twenty eighth. It's possible that if there was interest and availability, we could schedule a special meeting of this committee. To, and to, to meet with the business manager and get some input on the sections that are. You know, heavily impact. Her office.
It's just something to consider, but it's okay. We can, we should like just focus in on our stuff right now.
Okay, so for the sake of, of, of just cleaning up what we can clean up, I'm gonna just kinda take out the notes, then.
What I would suggest actually is, yes, take out the notes, you know, the need input for business management superintendent, that's said in several places. Up above, where you have the italics. I, I think we just add one, where above the parentheses one, and just, just say that, you know, the specifics of this new. Template need, need input from the new business manager and, and the superintendent. And, you, you know, and, and just, just have that as a blanket statement.
Understood. I think that's a good approach. Jen, you okay with that?
Yep, sounds good.
And, and my broader feeling is that we'll get some of this this year, and some of it will probably wait until the new budget software, which hasn't even been. You know, we, we haven't had a chance to be able to look at. So. You know, having it as a, a, a template is very, very useful, and some of the, the details are just gonna be naturally hashed out in the process, like. For instance, the first part about the budget message, a lot of that's already in what we have, we're just asking for. A few more things in there. My guess is that will be done, right? Some of the reorganization, it might be, because the business manager said, yes, please, I have never done this anyway for your school system, and I've got. And, and I'll, I'll do it, something that's aligned with what I've done before, and what you want. Or it might just be, I am saddled with looking at this same antiquated Excel spreadsheet. The best I can do right now. And so I could see it gone either of those ways, or anywhere in between, so. It, it's like where we're trying to get to, and, and this is gonna be a healthy direction along that way.
Yes. All right.
But I do wanna search a little PDF. Regardless.
Yes, that, that notes is in.
And I want all numbers center justified, center justified.
No. Oh my God, I just got Ray off of like, left justified. I was like, oh my God.
Or we're taking small steps.
So the other night, you guys missed it, they presented like a document. They had. Accounting currency. So that just shows you where like the dollar signs are in different places. Then they had like two decimal places. I'm here like. And then. I can't remember what else they had. It, it was a hot mess, so I told them, like, can you just like make this like, fix this? Maybe in our template, we could put accounting zero decimal places, commas. Use this font.
Right justified.
Right justified. It detracts, like, they have like, you know, good work ahead of them, but like those little things detract.
It's like hard to read and track, cause at the same time, it's, it's hard to get a sense of the size of the number of its left or center, you know, like.
And if there's no commas, and there's two decimal places, you're like, what is this? So, anyway.
All right, so this next yellow highlighted section was like our own brainstorm on certain areas. And this is where I wanted the business manager's input to like, where would they fit in, or is it a thing that we need to break out, or. Can we go with like, so I should say that this list here is actually something I found in one of the policies. And that's where I pulled it from, the blue list, the blue highlight. And then I saw what we had drafted, and I was like, well, maybe there's a way to integrate them, but that's something that I imagine the business manager would be able to do a lot quicker than we could. As to, as far as where to put them. But then again, I was like, well, does it even need to be in there, our, our brainstorm? And, or can we put that on the side, and then, I mean, just go with what was put, what was already mentioned in the, in the policy of, of budget preparation?
Yeah, I guess you're asking, do we need that level of detail?
Right.
In, in this document.
Right.
Yeah. My thinking was, and, and they, they have it mostly anyway, but it really should be according to that, that list that you, you took out of the policy, because I think that state.
Right, that, that, that was the, what we're talking about, was trying to find the state mandated codes for the functions.
Yeah, and these are them.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would say, you know, we have this list in other documents, and we can kinda, you know, bring that forward at other times, in other ways. Or possibly like, you know, after we get a chance to chat with the business manager, or we hear the, we can just kinda keep it in pocket for when we talk to the board. And ask if that's something they wanna put back in there. But as for right now, like, I can, I can just pull it out now, so the document moves cleaner.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Because as long as we have like a checklist of like, those items are identified somewhere. Eventually. You know, like within the, the state coding, we should be okay.
Yes.
And, and on this, the one that school site budgets. I, I know our intention, and it's made clear by what's listed below. But sometimes site budgets gets interpreted very narrowly as not really discretionary fund, but, but what the principals actually have control over. At, at school level, so I. It's almost like. School budget breakdown instead, yeah. So. Because we just wanna buy those units, and, and they already have that, of course, but maybe that central office, though. But. I just don't wanna see like the, you know, the hundred thousand dollars each school might have. We, we wanna see the biggies, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, we don't wanna just see like the. Well, we don't want to just see like the hundred thousand site or seventy five thousand dollars site this budget for supplies and stuff, we wanna see like. Uh, full-time equivalents for faculty and everything, so that we can say, for instance, is Mystic River getting proportionally more or less or the same as Charles Barnum, things like that.
Mm hmm.
So the function object code break alignment, would that suffice, or do we need to go like a little more granular beyond object code?
You might, oh, you you might not just, you might get rid of that line too, right? Cuz it is in the red tab, but they can find that.
Yeah, maybe like school site, um.
Could just be school, but yeah.
Yeah, could just be school budget or hmm.
Yeah, cuz you've listed it, right? Yeah, it's could be.
Yeah.
Hmm.
The school.
Right, I guess central office known as a school, they do hold education.
Yep. Yeah.
So this, we wanna take this out too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was helpful for us and they've already got it in, that's that's fine, right?
Yeah, I think we can remove the word breakdown though too, right? Just school budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has a negative feel to it anyway, with the. So.
And they do this already, they have it, so it's not like we're asking for anything new.
No, I just sort of like the arrangement.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. And how about like little notes like this, acknowledge that not exclusively Board of Ed jurisdiction, but this would serve as a tracker. Um. I mean, that's something that would come out, I mean, it's already come out in conversation a number of times during meetings. From um various board members that that, you know, that's something that we should do anyway, um, that's. But do we need that note in there to, again, like add as a disclaimer that we're not trying to say that, you know, we can allocate that money necessarily?
Yeah, I think I think it's good to have that disclaimer for sure and and it's important to have the CIP. Yeah.
Alright, uh, Jen, you you concur?
Yes.
Alright, very well then. Whole bunch of returns here. Alright, so this will be now the new chapter two. Alright.
And with this chapter. Do you sort of, can we do with just their format?
Mm hmm.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, my their their format starts in October and ends in May. And it doesn't discuss like broader context, um. But. That that was my thought is having like the two different ones, cuz. You know. While we're not necessarily overseeing the 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 um audits, we should always be aware that they're happening. And it would be good to get sort of a check off on that, saying that it's been done and everything's been submitted on time.
But but maybe that sort of thing can and and the year end closeout and the strategies for next year, which are. Uh, more or less in policies anyway, or will be. Um, maybe instead of. You so it's kind of like two timelines, right? Like, we have the main timeline and then before or after say that. You know, we have these other functions, right? And and just like in encapsulate that in a short paragraph. You know, we have possibilities to um re- review uh the current year's budget, how it went, right? Basically, all the stuff you say. Um, get ready for audits, stuff like that.
Mm hmm.
Um. So.
So are you proposing that we leave it as is, or or do you wanna like make some adjustments here? Do you wanna add in a couple sentences at top here?
I would say, okay, so the first version is our long working version, right? Uh, I I would say, my feeling is like, when we go through those. Um, which ones aren't in their, their their current timeline, I feel like it's July and August.
Um, yes.
And and maybe that's it. Let me take a look through. Uh, except for the monthly reports, right? Like, and and that's important to capture, um. And then, yeah, so it's it's June, July, August. And and so I I think that fits pretty neatly, um, just written below their format of timeline. Along along and just like, these are additional, you know, budget or fiscal related. Uh, or bu- budget related um responsibilities in board or something like that, and just just have it in a paragraph. As we can say, we need this monthly, June, July, August is the time for. Uh, those two things, uh, or three things, and and that way. They're they're just looking at one budget that looks, or one timeline that looks real, real familiar with just a couple of tweaks, which are going to be very important. So.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Uh, Jen, your thoughts?
Um. Yeah, I could, I could live that, I was, I was okay with having the July and August and September all split out the way it is. But I'm okay with having it consolidated into a paragraph.
Oh, or you could just put lines added to the their current form.
Hmm.
We could just do that and, you know, it, one of them would be July, June thirtieth.
Right.
Yeah, maybe we just add three lines. No one will read that far. Definitely will.
Yeah.
That could, that could do it.
Interesting, okay. Hmm. Hmm. So you're saying just merge into the bottom of this table?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get, we'll have a June, we'll have a July, August and a September, since there wasn't one on top anyway. And uh, cuz the September is the part of the audit stuff. And that end of year closeout like to the state. Uh, that's right in there. And then then we've wrapped it around. Twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five.
Yeah. They need to stay in the office and don't go home.
But it does convey that in a very real way, our our work continues through the summer.
Yes.
Right.
And you know how like we um requested um. That insurance review? And like we're getting it like in a couple of weeks, it's almost like we should have that like every year, you know? We.
Right.
Add that here somewhere.
And it'd be ideally, that would be a good thing, I think, to do during the summer.
Mm hmm.
You know, cuz right now it is actually happening in the middle of the ramp up of the budget pipeline and and that's not a great time to do it, I mean, it's better than it was before. But even earlier would be better, so that we could be prepared to make a move. Um, if we wanted to make a move. Uh. But, you know. Maybe like July-ish would be good. Um, thoughts?
When does it close out? Cuz like I'm trying to think like, would they have the information?
I always thought it was kind of adhered to like the fiscal year, but I don't know, like, they they, I I don't feel like we've ever gotten a clear. Like, when is their go no-go date if we wanted to change plans? That's the question.
Mm hmm. Yeah, cuz like. Right, because that's part of the budget, well, not, it's not really part of the budget process, but it is part of the financial review that they need to, um. Review the benefits that you're gonna offer and that should be like one of the benefit items, right? And they need to get that. Um. In control or at least have a good estimate before this whole budget process.
Right. Alright, so I'm just gonna make a note here for to merge the two together, cuz I'm I'm, I think that'd be a better way, that's a cleaner way to do it. And I can just kind of consolidate um the notes that we had from the other one into the same format down here, just for the time. And then add in the notes that maybe in the months that overlap. Uh, but that's a time-consuming process that I can do uh on my own. Um, after this meeting. Um. Prior to the cow. Over the weekend. Um. So. Back up here. Alright, so that actually takes us to the meat of the main timeline, like the actual budget procedure uh timeline. Where it's like from the admin's point of view, um. Because there are. Some significant changes in there. Which I went through and I changed the dates, I basically took the one that Ray sent to us in the last meeting. And um. Just went through and and tried to make it correspond to what we had noted in our draft timeline. Um. But also, I I did, I made some adjustments here that are not. Um. That I was looking at a calendar for. And trying to like. Um, match their their format. Um, but looking at the calendar and looking at the dates. Um.
For the um, the one that has the all the January dates, like seven, nine, fourteen, sixteen, etcetera, can we just say January?
Uh, well, that's where I was trying to match their format, where they had dates for like when these meetings were going to happen. Cuz I think they also wanted wanna schedule. That they like actually post.
Okay.
Start planning for, so I thought specificity would be preferred here. Um, so I was looking at like basically like Tuesdays to Thursdays. Wherever there was no holidays intervening. Or, you know, that way would it would leave us open for um. You know, regular meetings and cow meetings where we had other business that was not budget related to attend to.
Yeah. So I need to go on vacation in January to somewhere with no cell phone or or internet.
Right, right.
I'll see you in February.
Well, but but it's not quite over then.
I'm gonna give Dean a hard time, he went to Korea, Mike.
Oh, hey.
Yeah, that actually kind of happened.
Then then I'll have him book me on whatever he, wherever he's going.
Yeah. So uh, not much um changed in the first many weeks, like. I basically just tried to highlight only the changes that I made to their timeline. Um, right?
Yeah. Um, yes.
Yeah, 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 help me, help, are you looking at their old one by chance, Jen?
No, I'm looking at yours, but I remember, cuz they were already com- um, having concerns about meeting in January. But if anything, like, um, that's the thing, that's the most, like, one of the more important date changes. Because doing a budget review in February is too late. Cuz that's their calendar, they didn't have any, they didn't have any review in January, it's like, um, no, even last year when it was. Um, a little convoluted when they, you know, when it was being run, like, we still had meetings in January. Um, it makes more sense to have it in January be done. Or, you know, a majority of it being done and then just tweaks in February if we have to.
Right, right.
So I I mean, if that's the thing that we need to push the most or to like have it changed, that's it, is like get all the work done in January.
Right, and the other significant change too was this Monday, December sixteenth. In their timeline, they had um some early December date that was. Uh, presenting to the Finance and Facilities Committee only.
Mm hmm.
And uh, so looking at the calendar and kind of think about it realistically. They had that meeting happening before, I think, or during this time.
Mm hmm.
Summer two to thirteen time, so I remember I took that out and I put it at the end of their timeline, but before the Christmas break.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Yeah, that's.
And that. And that makes sense because at least, you know, this year is not an election year for us, but if it were, um, similar to. When we all started, like, we just got sworn in in that. I think in that timeframe, you know what I mean? So it.
It's like the first week of December, the new the new two, new term starts.
Exactly, so like, um, having it in that mid-December, late-December makes sense, cuz if you have it. Like. Earlier, um. The old board's gonna get it, and that doesn't make sense.
Right, and and in this way, like the new board would come on and basically get this dropped in their lap, but they would still, they would have the benefit of the holiday break. And a guaranteed almost two-month window for review and revision.
Mm hmm.
So, you know, while some might feel upset or that that maybe that's like slamming too much on a new incoming board member. It does build in a huge amount of cushion for that new board member to get acclimated to the document. And, you know, consult with other people about ways to approach it. So that they and and then plenty of time to deliberate with the with their fellow board members. And. So. Yeah, that's a good point, Jen, thank you for bringing that up. Um, so. Sorry, go ahead, man.
Oh, so I like the the timeline, it's definitely in line with what we discussed, uh. Um, my question is, in previous years, were there two public hearings for the budget? Um, I I really like that. That there's one early and there's sort of later, um, but I was wondering, I felt like there's only one in past years, I really like that we have two.
Yeah, so, no, for to my recollection and 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 on their timeline, there was only one. Um, but yeah, I added an extra one in here, um.
And do we have, um. Do we have a real, any obligation uh to even hold a a public hearing, like for some things in town, you have to hold a public hearing?
Um, is, I think, I think there is, yes.
And and can we, can you hold more than one, or is it like public hearing part one and part two? I mean, we can deal with that later, but I was just thinking. You know, can you have a more than one public hearing on the same subject? Um, it it just might be called it a little differently if we have to split it up, but that's not for now, it's just. That's details.
Understood, yeah, yeah, it's a detail to be discussed later, but the principle is the idea and and the thought, the rationale that I I, if memory serves or. The or as I was making this, one of the things I was thinking about trying to like actually just commit to it was. One is a public hearing for us as a board, as we're entering the thick of our deliberations. That we get a sense of what the community is looking for. Um, as we go into our transition from superintendent budget into our budget. Right? Um, and then the joint session is about halfway through that. So that still gives us time to make adjustments based on town council and RTM input, as well as public hearing after they've seen a few weeks of us working on it.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, and I would say last year, boy, oh, boy, I felt like when we had that RTM town council, BOE joint meeting. You you guys hadn't seen much of the budget either.
No, no, we did not.
Nope.
Turning.
I was just about draft one.
Yeah.
Uh. The first I thought was a piece of document, I should.
Get it right, it's a hundred and one. Oh, Mike, you missed it.
What?
No, I'm just saying, like, I felt like, um. We rehash the same stuff over and over, so it's almost like when, when this is presented, you know, like, and we're talking about those January dates. We need to be clear that we're gonna review whether it's school by school or section by section. Um, and that, um. If we have to, we would go back, but we are not gonna rehash it like as the start of each meeting, we will just continue to move forward.
Right. There'd be a se- sequence to it.
Yes.
Kind of like progression through, not circling around, yeah.
You just need to be very clear, cuz that was like really, um, I'll be honest, um, it was really painful. Having to listen to the same stuff like over and then by the time we got to the new items or the new sections. Having to listen to the same stuff like over and then by the time we got to the new items or the new sections. It was late, you know, so I like time wise, so it's just like how can we better? Or more effectively manage our time.
Right. Alright, so. How are we with uh this page? Are we good as a draft of the notes that I gotta merge? The two together?
Yeah.
Mm hmm, right, yeah.
Alright, so we'll move on and to the main event. Um. So, chapter five. Into the policy revisions. Um. So uh you guys have had a couple of days with this. Do you uh, how do you want to proceed? Um. Any thoughts off the off the off the cuff?
So.
I know.
Oh, go go.
Go on. I know we worked on some of these like throughout our budget. Is there like a color coding where you um like when we're going through, like you change?
Oh, yeah, okay, um, yeah, so the red ink is is elimination, omission.
Yep.
Get them. Um, that's old text that needs to be eliminated. And then the green is new text that's proposed. The black is old text that can stay.
Yes, but like when during our um working sessions, there were some that we edited, right? And I thought we were good with those. Um. Aren't there some that like is brand new that like you edited on your own that like Mike and I?
Uh, so no, what what we, yeah, so the way I viewed that page that we had with the chart on it.
Mm hmm.
Basically, just I guess brainstorming of like what could be done and what should be done.
Okay.
And then I took all those notes and I went hunting through all the policy to find where I could just place those thoughts in.
Okay.
So if you uh pulled up the uh the minutes from the last meeting and looked at that page. Um, whatever attachment it was that had our brainstorms on the policy revisions.
Mm hmm.
You'll, you could do a side-by-side comparison as we go through all these revisions and probably find the nuggets. Of where pulled from that document and put them into these various, because there are some that like kind of. I could put them in a couple of different ones in different ways, right? Spirit of what we wanted to to revise actually impacted a couple of different policies. Um, and others that were just like all in one.
Yeah, but this is our first attempt, right? And then we're gonna um push it to policy, right?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. The whole idea is like, you know, if we're good with the general gist of what we're looking at. Then you know, pass it on to policy and and you know, let it go through that process and it'll go through, you know, the regular meetings. The first read, second read, so the whole board will have a swing at it as well.
Mm hmm.
So policy gets two swings and. The whole board gets two swings. This is our first look at the actual draft language inserted into existing policy.
Got it.
So. I've been through these a lot, so I'm I'm just kind of gonna leave it uh to you to to kind of um. I'm basically like I'm my feeling with all these, I'm fine if all these just went right to policy and started process there. I guess I'll just say that. But this is a committee process, so um obviously like you guys um, you know, uh. Whatever you want to change, if there's something in there that you think maybe is a is a hard no-go or is is not in the right place.
Yeah.
We can make the change now before we send it out.
So in um that little first section where you added um deleted the and then put like past, present and future needs. Do we say past, present and future, or could we just say program in relation to the needs? Of the staff, student and community like?
Yeah, make it less wordy. I'm open. Mike, thoughts?
Mike, are you okay with that?
I'm I'm here. I have to step outside as a public service announcement there. We can see the Aurora Borealis tonight.
Oh, Jesus, really?
It's very pink sky. Um, so I stepped away from my my computer um and I'm looking at that.
Um, oh, you can see it right now?
Yeah.
Because my husband, um, hold on, now I'm just gonna have to excuse myself because he was talking about.
We should recess the meeting for about five, ten minutes.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, it will. No, no, um, no, um, it'll literally, it'll take me two seconds to walk over to where he is and just let him know. Um, because that's like on our bucket list and if we don't need to go to Iceland, there you go. I'll let him know. I'll be back.
Okay.
Right. Mike said that you can see on the side already. Yeah, so if you want to head out. I'm back. I'm back. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Wow, yeah.
I'm gonna turn off the light in my kitchen.
Oh, yeah.
So do you guys live in a dark place that you can see it?
It's not that dark. It's dark enough. I can see a glow. Um, I'm in Grand City, so. We've got EB and Pfizer to contend with.
Well, early.
Mm hmm. No, Mike's already seen it.
It's happening around us and I'm still in my meeting. And we're on mic here.
Oh. Yeah, so.
So so can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, so. Um, I I I like that we've got the policies laid out. Uh, I wonder if you just wanna. List each policy first, just a heading and say these are the ones. Um, that that we think need modification and uh and then have the other stuff after. I mean, in a different layout, the the suggestions could be in appendix, but but I don't think we need to branch. The the document like that, uh but just just so it helps kind of like it's it's a breadth that um. You know, what they'd be approving as as a whole board is to like basically we're we're asking for these to, it's a referral, right?
Right.
Guidance or referral to to change these specific policies. Um, with with guidance from from what we what we have there. And and so like kind of by listing those policies and you can just do them by number and title. Um, just say that like we recommend that da, da, da. Uh, these be referred to policy. It's sort of there in the parentheses, but just kind of draw it out, so it's so it's clear that that's the action item. Rather than um like the the actual specific text, because because I could see someone reflexively thinking this is an overstep. Um.
Mm hmm.
Or or everyone just going into the each wordsmith thing, everything.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so I got that. I'll I'll make a note here and just list policy by number and title and um basically present as a package.
Yeah, and then there I think there there are either five or six of them.
Um, nine total.
Oh, okay, so it's more. There's there's one of them that the only modification is um basically the ad like. Written email. It's basically has to do with procurement. Um. Say it again?
Yes, yes, I remember that one, yeah.
Uh, I'm wondering if that's a little outside of us.
Well, the only reason I I went there, actually, honestly, those were a sort of a last minute add-in because of um the last meeting that we had with Ray. And that letter that he sent to the whole board. Where he was making recommendations on uh procure on on purchase orders and certain procedure changes. And those notes were still kind of fresh in my mind as I was working on this document and. I found those policies that had the that all that stuff listed out. And I said, well, you know, maybe I'll just throw those in there. Um. But uh. That's not something that we actually like, I mean, we talked about it loosely about having purchasing guidelines, but. I think it's this one.
Is it five eight?
Let's see. It's five, seven or five, eight. Five, seven was one paragraph change. Yeah, five, seven is the one paragraph that's different, that like one, one little bit of green. Five, eight is definitely, yeah, this is one of ones that was a bit of a more heavy renovation. Uh, based on a lot of what Ray was talking about. A lot of this language I took. Um. From his line, from his letter. Um. So what were your thoughts? You thought this was a bit too much, too far afield?
Yeah, I I mean, so I get your, I I see what your irrational is. Just just that I think it may not have been in our original charge. Although it does fit in with addressing um audit issues.
Right, and it does also, I mean, in in my mind, one part of our charge is oversight, right? Um, and this sort of creates. A paper trail or or sort of mandates a paper trail that would make oversight more achievable.
Yeah, um. I guess what we could do in fair, like when it's presented to say um. This guideline or subchapter five eight um may have been. Um, extending beyond our scope, but was. You know, part of like other discussions, so um information was filled in. Um, and as it's referred to policy, you know, they can review it.
Got it.
Because we need to have it in there, right? Um, so but it's just a matter of like, okay, when would we put it in if we took it out here, right?
Right.
It would be something that you'd, somebody would have to refer to policy separate and that's just not. Good use of anyone's time, so. And if if the rest of our peers or board members want to remove it and then have it be its own item, then you know. We can vote on, you know, we could, we can have that conversation at that point. Um. Yeah, some of these definitely need to be revamped like from nineteen ninety.
Yeah, that's one of the surprising things I found getting into this was a lot of them have the nineteen ninety stamp.
Mm hmm. Not related to budget, um, but sort of related to budget, right? As larger institutions, right, they have um. And I don't know as a school district if we're put with discharge, but like having like supplier diversity. Um, and and I don't know if that's like a policy item. Like I said, it's probably a little bit out of this budget reach, but it's. It may be something. You know, like as you're looking if they're gonna update like five, eight or five, seven or one of the purchasing ones that. Um, maybe we consider like um women, veteran. Um, minority-owned businesses, um. You know, sometimes I'm sitting in those meetings and. It's sort of like, oh, yeah, we're using this vendor because we used them in the past or they're the only ones that do this type of work, but. I sit there and it's sort of like have we really as a school district done the due diligence of um putting out to bid. Allowing um. Other smaller and like I said, we're not a large company, right? I you know, and our district is pretty sizable, but it's not. Huge, but it's almost like every little step like helps and I um so. And I don't know if that's that's definitely not here, but.
Yeah, definitely fall into it to it. That's something actually I would recommend um. Uh, emailing to the policy chair.
Okay. That's true, right?
No, 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 I am not the chair. I'm just a member.
Oh, you're just okay.
Matt Schuman is the chair.
Is it Matt? Okay, I can talk to Matt.
Yeah, yeah, see, because that that definitely be a policy revision and um. Yeah, like, so that would be the.
Yeah, it always puts me on edge like, hey, are we always going to the same people just? Because we've worked with them and then we we don't know and we're not, we don't know who's out there.
Right. Alright, um, so uh aside, so I got those two notes up there in the in the parentheses. I can polish those up. Uh, over the weekend, um. Mike, are you good with that as far as that is a disclaimer? Just identifying five point seven, five point eight is kind of like. Fourth quarter additions, so to speak.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it.
Okay, um, so that brings us to five point nine, which has to do with monthly reports and annual reports. Um. Or I mean, I didn't want to blow over all the other ones, but are are we good with just like what we said as a disclaimer, send it as a package to policy and? Let it go through the process and let the board have at it and yeah, alright. Yeah, I think that's the best way to go is that way, like, you know, everyone can have their say at once. And we have a process for doing this. Um, so yeah, five point nine and uh nothing too controversial. That one again is just a slight. Uh, addition of details to what would be in those monthly reports. And I also put in something about the grants as far as I. Um, that's something that, you know, again, there seems to be a lot of interest that uh about that on the board when it's mentioned about having. The actual reports that they submit to their evaluators be part of what they report to us. Um, but so I could actually just add five point nine to that same disclaimer up top. How about that?
Yeah, sounds fair. We'll treat them all the same.
Yeah. Right. Um, well, we've exceeded our hour, but uh we were very close and got about one more page to go. So I say we just uh push on through and because that the last page is not even really up. It's just a. It's just the 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 um brainstorm sheet as is. Um. Do we want to present that or just cut that chapter out and just say that it's not been handled and uh we look forward to doing that?
You know what? Since it's like um. Everything else is like pretty solid. Let's cut, I I would recommend and I would recommend cutting it out. Just so that it's sort of like everything else looks good and solid and then we could just say um. We would um move forward with the budget software review in conjunction with the new business manager um at a later date. Probably after the two thousand, after the budget process.
Exactly, which leads us to the next uh agenda item. Um, Mike, are you okay with that approach? Just cut out chapter six?
Yeah, you can either cut it out or. There and just basically say exactly exactly what Jen said and what you kind of have anyway. Uh, I think it's part of it, like but get rid of the chart and everything.
Gotcha.
So. But is there, isn't there one policy that has a lot rating?
Yeah, that was the 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 purchasing policy one. Yeah, that was the 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 purchasing policy one. And a lot of that, that had the densest text addition to it. Which was me kind of revising, taking stuff that that Ray said and putting into policy language. Or putting what he wrote in his letter into policy language.
Oh, and then there's another one too like that, just a small little paragraph somewhere.
Seven was the guidelines and five point eight is the procedure.
Yeah.
Yeah. The guidelines only had one new paragraph inserted in, um, and then the the procedure had a lot. So. But those are, those are mentioned in that disclaimer as far as um, you know, these these weren't specifically mentioned as part of our charge, but it was came up numerous times and was also uh, recommended by the interim business manager. And, you know, they Yeah, I guess, you know, if we vote this thing forward, then we were just recommending that the policy committee take a look at those as well. Is that a fair, would that be a fair position?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, so in that case, um, I'd entertain a motion to um, accept the uh, draft, the draft interim report as amended. And uh, move it forward to the Board of Education as a whole and the Policy Committee.
I'll move that we accept the draft interim report as amended and as directed to amend uh, during this meeting.
That works for me. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, none opposed, none abstaining, um. So that passes now. Do we want to move the uh, chapter five forward to the Policy Committee? As a recommendation from this committee.
Oh, do you want to do it straight?
Yeah, well, I I talked, I talked to the chair and he's he said that he's fine with that and and he would sign off on it as well also as a referral. And and like I said, I talked to the chair of the uh, of the Policy Committee and and he already inserted a line into his agenda for to to hold a place for this, so they're expecting it.
You know what?
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, let's do it. This way it won't get um, it won't get held up in the COW and then go to policy, get revised revised there. It just goes straight from us to policy and then policy can fix it and then like um, yeah, let's, I'm okay with that, going straight over to policy.
Alright, then I would entertain a motion to uh, to discuss that.
Second.
Uh, just say uh, so moved, I guess.
Oh, so moved.
Yeah, and then uh, Mike, are you a second on that or?
I'll second.
Alright, um, any discussion? Nope, alright, hearing none, then I'll take a vote, uh, I'll call for a vote, I should say. All in favor of sending chapter five to the Policy Committee for uh, review and revision?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, all in favor? None opposed, none abstaining, so that passes. Alright, so um, that concludes our business of the report. And um, so the next date of our next meeting or identify the date of our next meeting, um. I proposed the idea of March twentieth, twenty twenty five. In the agenda and um, the thought on that was that that gets us all past the full, like all the budget process, looking at their calendar or the admin calendar, it 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 ends, that's a week after, almost a week after they finalize their um, you know, delivery to the manager. Like there's a lot of stuff, there's some like administrative stuff between the twenty eighth and the fourteenth that they were doing.
Are we going to try to meet with Irene before or now? What I can't, I don't recall what we.
I guess, I guess we could, that's where I thought like, I don't know, I don't want to necessarily commit to that.
Okay.
You know, I I'm open to it and we can do it with this, we have plenty of time in the next two weeks to schedule a special meeting. So we could say the next proposed, the next date would be Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty fifth unless other, unless needed. Unless otherwise indicated.
If you want it on a Thursday, it's the twenty seventh.
I was going for the week before that. Is that in the middle of a break or something?
March twenty seventh is the Thursday.
Right, and and, well, yeah, March twentieth is the Thursday before that.
Oh, the twentieth?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, did I misspeak?
I thought I heard you say twenty five, but you might have meant the year and I wasn't, yeah.
Yeah.
My bad.
Alright, um. Mike, thoughts on that? Do you want to try to commit to a date between now and and October twenty eighth and hope that we can get the business manager in or just let the process play out as it is and?
My preference is just to get the business manager at the cow.
Yeah, I think that's gonna happen, honestly. Um, thoughts then, so, um, so yeah, so is everyone good with Thursday, March twentieth, six forty five, on twenty twenty five?
Sounds good.
Alright. Mike, no objections?
Well, I'm theoretically good.
Alright, we'll call it good for now.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so with that being the case, uh, we can, I'll take a entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, so moved.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, alright, no objections, no abstentions. We are adjourned at eight oh four PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.